Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. This is our Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, and I will do a roll call of commission members. Matthew Bandle?
Present.
Rojia Afshar?
Present.
David St. Germain?
Here.
Liz Sanford?
Here.
So Bruce Polsky?
Present.
Mike Tucci?
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman?
Here.
Okay, I'll note for the record that Robert Canto and Scott Halsted are absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Liz Sanford. I am the acting chair. Tonight, due to Scott Halsted's absence, we will be conducting a full slate of business. I do want to make one announcement at the beginning that our two public hearings tonight will be opened and then immediately continued until our July 8th, 2024 meeting due to the applicant's request. So we will not be having any discussion on those items tonight. Okay, we will start with the reading of the public notice. Mr. Bandle?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zone Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, June 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications: CPD Properties 342 Colt Highway LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval for New Fuel Service Convenience Store and Quick Service Restaurant at 342 Colt Highway B1 BR Zones. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation is in-person at 1 Monteith Drive Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online via the link to the meeting on the Farmington's website. A copy of this proposal is online or by calling the Plan Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this sixth day of June 2024.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's, let's begin with new business.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt just for two items? Can we do appointments to fill the absences for Mr. Halsted and Mr. Canto? And then if we could add and make the modification to the agenda to add in new business item six first, and then we can tackle our items.
Thank you very much. I was ready to get going.
I understood.
So our alternates tonight will be?
So we've got Mr. Polsky and Mr. Tucci here, and the chamber is available to, and Ms. Zimmerman is online, so.
I just wasn't sure of our rotation and who's.
It's, I don't think it matters.
Okay, so, Mike and Bruce, are you prepared to act and vote in tonight's meetings?
I am.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay. And was there something else that we're supposed to do first?
Agenda item six.
And, oh yes, and we have an agenda item that we would like to add, number six. And I don't have it right in front of me, and it's, oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to add an agenda item by Jack Kemper under new business. Jack Kemper at 22 Tunxus Street and accept an application for a special permit for home expansion in excess of the R20 thresholds and attached accessory dwelling unit in excess of 700 square feet in the R20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of July 22nd. Okay, so do I have a motion to add that?
It's just to add.
To add that to the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Second?
Does that work?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And any, no abstentions? Okay, motion passes. So that will be item number six under new business. Okay, I got all the details out of the way, right, Shannon?
Yes.
So, okay, so let's begin with our first item under new business, which is Russell Speeders Car Wash at 410 Wana Masa Lane.
I believe we've got Phil Henry on the call.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
TC, now, is with Russell Speeders as well?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So if one of you could walk the commission through the changes to the plan, please?
Sure, I could, I could, I can give a high-level view, and then does any questions either myself or TC will be able to, to respond. So I'm just gonna grab my notes here. So on, we, we were before you on June 10th, and at that time, there were a number of items that we needed to address, and between June 10th and tonight, we received a second letter from staff that narrowed down from our initial letter, I would say, a few months ago. And we met with Shannon and Bruce last week, and it was determined that we should issue a site plan today for each project. And then some of the more technical stuff, we verbally agreed to in, over our Zoom meeting. So we're prepared to commit to, to those other technical items. But in order to simplify things, we did submit a site plan for each, and I'll walk through first on Wanamasa, what you see, what the plan changes were related to just the site plan. So in no particular order, I guess perhaps most, the biggest change was the vacuums. So at our prior hearing, we had committed to proposing individual vacuums that turned on and off as, I would say individually, as users use them in their parking space. The, however, in speaking with, with staff, we decided to go to a central vac system, which means that each vacuum station, each, I'll call it sucking station, does not have a vacuum associated with it. It's just a hosing. And in each of these areas, there's a central vacuum, and the purpose of, of doing that was trying to pull, I'll call it the, the primary noise maker of the vacuum procedure away from residential areas. And on Wanamasa, it is, residential is primarily across the street. There's a gas station to our left, and then behind us, there's a mound with a, with a bike trail or a trail that, we understand is going to be cut down to some degree, but there's still going to be a substantial berm in the back. And then obviously, to the right of us is, is, you know, resource area and the river. So I guess I'll dictate, and Shannon, perhaps maybe you can just point. So in the, in the front part of the site, there are six vacuum spaces on the left side, and then the central vac area is that area right there that's rev clouded. That is a, that's a four-by-ten concrete pad with a 20 horsepower vacuum turbine mounted on it. And the idea on how that works is that when any of the users of those six spaces needs the vacuum, that turbine sucks, you know, debris from the vacuum hose through an overhead hose, which is all going to be connected into that central vacuum unit. That vacuum unit on, on this particular one here, we are going to propose to, to enclose that in, in a six-foot-high vinyl, vinyl enclosure. So as, as these, as this conversation evolves, we can certainly talk about the enclosure, but we're, we're prepared to propose this one here, a six-foot-high vinyl enclosure. Looking at the specifications, this central vac is close to six feet tall, so which is why we chose a six-foot enclosure to house, you know, visually, but also additionally muffle the sound for the vacuum. So that's a pretty good, that's a, that's probably, well, that is an exact photo of what they're going to be proposing here. It even looks like it has maybe six, six vacuums on it, or maybe six or seven spaces on it. So that, what you see there in gray, that, that unit will be housed. And because the, the vacuum units are, are bisected by the building, there, there's another set of four vacuum spaces in the back, which will also have a similar turbine setup or central vac setup here. We, we did not propose this to be enclosed, simply because more looking at it from, from a sound perspective and a visual perspective, this will be behind the building. Again, we're, we're not adverse to having discussions about the enclosure. This is what, this is our, you know, our, our initial proposal on the vac, on the central vac setting. So again, the idea is to, to get the vacuum, to get the number of vacuums reduced from, in this case, it would be 10 individual vacuums, to two central vacuums, and then pulling them as far away from the residential properties as possible. So I'll go through all the changes. This was the most substantial. I'll just go through all the changes, and then we can, we can have a discussion. The number two on our list was, we added some additional recycling receptacles and then centrally located them on the vacuum aisles, I'll call it. So, you know, on the, on the front one, there's a central recycle. These, these canisters or the vacuum pylons themselves, they come with mounted trash, but not recycled. So we've done this on a prior site, maybe it was, it might be in, in Danbury, which is under construction now. We're doing the same type system here where we're adding recycling. So there's one up there, and then there's also one in the back as well. Number three was just added a note. We, we had provided, I guess what Shannon would, would say, a pretty robust and in-detail spill kits, and it looks like we might have overshot what I think they were asking for. So we're going to be providing some simpler pads and absorbent pads, but we at least, we want to get a note on there, so there's an enforcement mechanism for the, for the, for the commission. So that was just to add that note. And then lastly, the, we increased the striping of the ADA space from five feet to, to eight feet, so thereby making it a 16-foot-wide ADA space, eight foot for the space itself and eight foot for the striping. So, so that, that summarizes our, our plans that, I'm sorry, the modifications that would show up on the site plan. There are other items that I think are in the, the agenda review that we can discuss and that we've committed to. Some of them are just conditions that just need to be placed in a, in a decision, and then some also might fall on, on other plan sheets. Hopefully, I summarized that well, Sandra, Shannon, sorry.
Yes, that's, it's fine. Obviously, if the commission has other questions, then we can dive into elements based on the engineering and planner's agenda review.
Okay, thank you. Well, commissioners, before we open it up to questions, I just want to let everyone know that I have done all the background reading while I was absent for the meeting, the preceding meeting on June 10th, 11th. I have watched the entire meeting and feel prepared to vote on this matter. Okay, Commissioner Bandle, questions?
I think the only question I had last time, and it remains, is I do appreciate what they've done with the vacuums. I do think that was the major item, major hurdle for me. I'm interested to see if there is some kind of additional material we can throw within that fence. I know they make, you know, reducing or noise-reducing foams or, or like polymers that you can apply, if the applicant would be on board, you know, obviously within reason, but would be on board with installing that within the fence as well.
Yes, certainly. Or we could look at, even if the vinyl wasn't as sufficient, I guess, from like a density standpoint, and maybe a more denser product might provide, provide more sound suppression, that we could look into that as well.
Okay, yeah, that was, that's all I really had. I think the, the vacuum at the north end, I believe.
These are, so this, north is plan left, so.
So west, east, the eastern, I don't think that one's a problem. That berm behind there is very large. It would just be the one on the, on the west-hand side.
Okay, the one closer to Wanamasa.
Yes. Yeah, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, for your presentation and your update, and thanks for cooperating with town. And Shannon, just to make sure, the, this change transition from individual vacuums to central, that, that's going to help with the noise reduction, is that correct?
It appears to, based on the data that's been provided. So there was a couple of things. So there's, in the agenda review, there's an added item at the end that indicates the property and activities that the property shall comply with the town noise ordinance. So kind of a catch-all for us. The other thing, Mr. Seer and I were discussing this before the meeting, as I was trying, that their data came in on, on Friday. Understand, we had only met like two days prior to review the, the comments. So all the noise data on this new central vac system came in on Friday. I was reading it this afternoon and discussed it with Mr. Seer at the end of the day. And he had a good suggestion that to actually, when they're ready to proceed with building permit, work with the vacuum vendor, have the applicant work with the vacuum vendor, explain the proximity to residential units, and make sure that these vacs are being placed in their most optimum location, and if any other attenuating devices, whether it's paneling, et cetera, be applied, that we're drilling into that deeper at the time of building permit. But I think with the, if the commission, should you choose to get to a point to vote on this this evening, if the commission includes the comments that have been prepared and presented for you, then I think we will catch everything.
Perfect.
Matt, would you be agree, does that seem like a reasonable approach on your end?
Yeah, I think that's TC under Matt's, right?
Yeah, I don't think Matt's available tonight, but yes, yes, certainly.
You're showing as, you're showing as Matt TC, just F1.
Oh, I do? Oh, yeah. Oh, I see now at the top, Matt's talking. No, this is TC.
Yeah, sorry, I, I didn't pick up on that. I was focused on the written name and not the start. I apologize. Is that, that seems to be a reasonable approach for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thanks. That, that was my only concern, and no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to stick to in the, in the room, and then we'll go online. Bruce?
Okay, just a quick one. While I was reviewing the, the plan, I noted that the circulation patterns that you have for people are pretty complicated for a, a small plate space, but I, but I get it, because you want to be able to have people access to vacuums either with or without a wash. The, the ones who come out of the tunnel and want to access the west vacuums right there, they have to make a 180-degree turn for the back ones, and then an immediate left. Is there enough clearance and room for them to actually fit into those spots? Is that, was that looked at?
We think so, because it, that's the existing condition.
So that's there now?
Yes, that's there now.
For the existing vacuums? Okay. All right, and then for the, the circulation patterns, all those black arrows, are you going to actually have them painted white or something like that, or signage in, in reality? Because you've got a lot of back and forth in a small area.
Yeah, that's the intention, that those are painted arrows.
For, for all of them, that we, that are, that are there, not, okay?
Yeah, maybe perhaps not the one in the building. It's in the, that one, we will probably not paint.
Right.
But yeah, the other ones are intended to be painted, yes.
And then for where, you know, where you have them, you know, stopping and the do-not-enter and stuff like that, how are you going to mark those?
So those will be striped, and there'll be, I think we have signage there. So that's, well, that's, yeah, that's just a stop, but I think Shannon, I think he might be referring to in the back. Oh, you're talking about up here?
Yeah, no, the, the lines in there, like we had those double arrows, there's a stop and do-not-enter, right? Because you don't want people going, you know, back that way, right through the, through the space directly to the tunnel and, and others, you know, in order to keep the, make the circulation work, you know, you've got to get that right.
Exactly, yeah. The, the good news is that the, that the circulation in and out of the property is, is the same, essentially. And this is an existing car wash, so I think there's some familiarity with users perhaps. But yeah, there'll be signage and, and striping. That's, that's really, you know, that's standard practice, I guess. We, we're going to hope that people, you know, look at the signs and pay attention.
Okay, got it. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, online, Dave, any questions?
My question was mainly in reference to the compliance with the noise ordinance. And have we, you know, I'm still not clear, are we, are we aligned with that yet? Or there's, are there things that we still need to look at?
This is Shannon Rutherford. Dave, I believe, based on the new information that has been presented for the canister vacuums, it appears that the vacuums will comply with the noise ordinance. And in addition, the applicant has agreed, if needed, that the fencing can be increased to a denser material to provide noise attenuation if needed.
Okay, that's, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. And Kyla, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I just have two quick, it's, it's a little more of a clarification for me. Number one, how long is the vacuum on? Is there a cycle, a time cycle, or is it on, and then the operator turns it off when they're done? I'm just curious.
I don't have that information available. I could cer, we could certainly work through that vendor to provide that, but I do know that there is a lag time, I'm not sure how long, until the central system does shut off. It doesn't run the entire time, only when there's users utilizing the vac system is when it will turn on. But there should be a, a lag time that, where if no one's using it for, you know, a standard period of time, it would shut, shut off.
Okay, I was just curious to know, and that, that makes a lot of sense. So, okay. And my other question stems from the previous meeting. I know there was some back and forth about hours of operation, and I was still a little unclear.
Shannon, they have this, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, when, what's, what are, what are the hours of operation going to be?
So I, I believe we agreed to adhere to the prior approved hours of operation when they, these car washes came into existence with their public hearings. So for this location, it is Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM, 6:00 PM.
Okay. Okay, that is great. Okay, um, thanks for the presentation and the willingness to work with everyone. I appreciate that. And let me see, any other questions, concerns? Okay, I'm looking around the room. Is, do we feel we're ready to act, to vote on this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Dave, Kyla? Are you feeling prepared?
Sure.
Okay, then do I have a motion and a second concerning this item? Are you up, Matt?
Sure.
We need to put a condition.
Yes, I guess, I was going to just say, as presented, to encapsulate the four conditions, or the, I'm sorry, the 10 conditions?
Well, it could be, as noted in the planner's report, items one through 10, because that includes the engineering comments from June 14th.
Okay.
So if we do that, then I think we've caught everything. And this was emailed to their entire development team.
Okay.
On Friday.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for site plan approval for site improvements to existing car wash operations for Russell Speeders Car Wash of Connecticut LLC, as noted in the planner's report, items one through 10.
Second, thank you. Okay, all in favor of this motion? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposition? Okay, the motion.
Mike, for the record, you're a voting member on this.
I said aye.
You did say aye. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Okay, got it, sorry.
Okay.
We're good.
So the motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. So on to number two, which is the Russell Speeders, the 362 Scott Swamp Road location.
Okay, so I could do the same, Madam Chair. I could walk you through the plan modifications that are shown on the site plan. Is that okay?
Oh, that's, yes, please.
Okay, perfect. So the first one, I'll, I'll go to the stop, the stop markings, Shannon, at the front. We, there's a, you could see now at the exit driveway, there's a bar with a single yellow line and two arrows left and right. A prior plan had the word "stop" there, as well as a stop sign, but we neglected to remember that there's a, that signal controlled, so we, we just simply removed those stop references. Number two is, we added a recycle receptacle and centrally located the same. There's one there, and then there's one across the way. We added the same note for, for spill kit, similar to the, the previous plan. Yep. And then we modified the ADA parking space, again, to, to expand that to, to be an eight-foot striping. And then lastly, the, the central vac situation here is, if you recall, the, the sensitivity to, the residences were actually towards the rear of this property, opposite the previous application. So what, what we did, or what we're proposing is, the, we're proposing to remove two vacuum spaces entirely, which is on the back right, yep, right there, and just have those be, we'll call them employee spaces. So it's a reduction of, from 17 vacs to 15 vacs. And then similarly, we're going to offer up two central vac locations. The first one, the, the one on the left side, is actually going to be inside the building, and will have the ability to close the doors. So with, 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 with a protruding overhead piping system, similar to the previous application. So we feel confident that, according from feedback from Sunny's, which is the vacuum manufacturer, that with the doors closed, there'll, there'll almost be no noise coming from, from that central vac. The second central vac will be an exterior one, 20 horsepower. on a similar four by 10 concrete pad. This one's situated to the front of the property closer to Route 6, and that will service the five remaining VACs on the on the right side. And this will also have a six foot high vinyl enclosure and you know, we've we're committing to working with the town on if additional sound attenuations required, or if there's a better preferred location or orientation of the of the vacuum, we we will do that prior to construction. So I I think I that that's all the notes that we had indicated. So it's fairly similar to the previous application, although the vacuum situations are slightly different. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Commissioners will ask for questions. Matt?
During the last meeting, my concern was the vacuums. I think this is, you know, they've gone above and beyond to address that, so I have no questions.
Thank you. Rosa?
Same with me. Thank you. And no questions.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions.
Okay, Mike?
Just one out of curiosity, the indoor VAC, is that more so for the winter weather? Or is that just convenience?
I think it's, we're trying to reinforce to we have an opportunity to put it inside the building, unlike the other project. Here, there's an opportunity to put it inside the building, so we we took advantage of that. It's going to have to be vented, obviously. But that's that's our reasoning. Okay.
So it's still functioning as a central VAC system, so that it's just rather than being the central VAC being located outside, it's going to be housed inside, and then all the VAC units are exterior to the building.
Got you. You're soon. That's that's all.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Now, online, Dave?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation on both. I forgot to thank you for the last one. Yeah, appreciate all the effort you've done to to reduce noise and hopefully it'll help mitigate and make everybody happy. So I've got no questions.
Thank you. And Kyla?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, thanks for the thorough presentation. I feel it seems, I appreciate your willingness to work with the town to solve these problems before they become bigger problems. And including the lighting and the specifically the the vacuum and the noise, and appreciate that. And I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate the the time taken now in order to prevent problems in the future. Okay, board members. Do we feel any more questions, anything that's come up, concern? Any discussion? Do we feel prepared to vote? Yeah, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, can I have a motion? And a second?
Is this one?
You did such a good job.
I second it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan approval for site improvements to existing car wash operations for Russell Speeders Car Wash of Connecticut LLC at 362 Scott Swamp Road, as noted in the planner's notes, items one through 10, one through nine.
Second. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Now. Okay, our next item is R Pelton Builders LLC of 161 Talkeet Notch Road, site plan approval for ground mounted solar array. And do we have someone to make a presentation? Oh, hi, welcome. Come on up. And state your name and address for the
Thomas Kenny, live in, live at 967 Asylum Avenue in Hartford. I'm one of the energy specialists that put together the project.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I'll continue.
Walk us through.
So I went through the Wetlands Commission, I think it was the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I think this is town planning and zoning.
Correct.
Okay, Hartford's different, so. So we went through the process of exploring months ago with the homeowner back in like November, December, rooftop option wasn't really feasible. They would need to cut roughly 20,000 square foot, square feet of trees. And I decided to kind of look at the GIS maps and all that, and this was the perfect place to do the ground out. I think it's 35 panels. And right there in the red, we're going to be putting some stone there to prevent, I think it's erosion. So that was a measure that was set in place during the Wetlands Commission. We're going to be doing a trench through the driveway, well, not through it, under the driveway across there. What else is there? Yeah, and then you have your production meter and all that, and that's gonna be there. Yeah, that's the project. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Matt?
All right, I guess more curiosity. So this is going to produce enough that it backfeeds into the into the system?
Yeah, it's grid tied. So every, I mean, just about every PV array in the state is grid tied. I mean, I've only had a handful of homeowners that went off grid. This is going to be grid tied, so it's going to be enough to produce. Forgot what the offset number is. It's well over 100% of the home's energy, so. Rooftop unit, it's like less than 5%.
Right.
And you know, it wasn't feasible cathedral ceilings, all that. Plus the need to cut trees kind of hurts my heart a little bit, so. Yep. Yeah, so this is gonna do very well for them. And it's, there's no need to cut any trees where the ground out will be placed either, so.
And it's 100 amp service or 100 amp system?
Well, the main panel will need to be 200 amp service. That's like a standard and solar or most renewables, if it's hydropower too, same thing. So the rec meter, that's the production meter for the panels. So that's rated at 100 amps.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, like I said, more curiosity than anything.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Rosa, any questions?
No, thanks so much for being here for your presentation. No questions for me.
Thank you.
Okay, and Bruce, any questions?
Do you actually? Thank you for being here as well. Seeing as this is a ground mounted array, are there any exposed electrical connections?
No, this is, well, there will, it's not exposed, it's gonna be like trench and conduit run, so everything's gonna be piped. The microinverters, we're using a microinverter system. All that's gonna be tucked underneath the the solar array.
So but could animals or anything get to it? At some point, is that a thing?
You do that more often with rooftop units. So you see a lot of bird's nests, squirrel's nests. Usually you'll see critter guard being placed. We could do that here, but I don't think there's really like much of a critter issue that was identified from the homeowner.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, Bruce. And Mike?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, my questions are more out of curiosity too. There was like an emergency in the home. Is there like power switch where you could turn the energy coming to the house off on the outside?
Yeah, if there's, you know, any issues with, you know, there is a shut off switch, automatic like shut off switch. So even if there's an outage or rolling brownout or any of those issues, it'll shut off automatically.
Okay.
And if they had batteries, the software from the manufacturer will be able to detect storms and everything, so it's kind of ready to store energy, but in this case, it's just a PV unit, a PV system.
Okay.
Yep.
Are those power switches located towards the array or?
It's, sorry, I need new glasses. So to be outside near the meter where it's located, so the EDC meter, that's the electric companies, oh, forget what the EDC means, that's like the technical phrase for the utility. So it it'll be placed like right outside there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
And as a rate, so does it, it moves with the sun? Or is it?
No, this isn't a this is just a fixed tilt system, so it's not like tracker, tracker, you would need, you know, one access point and it'll move with the sun. This is fixed tilt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you so much for that.
Trackers are expensive.
I'm hearing about a solar.
No, that's okay. Yeah.
Thank you for teaching me a little.
Yeah, that's, it's fun to learn.
Exactly. Okay, great, Mike. Okay, online, Dave, any questions?
Yeah, another curiosity question, sorry. So you said there's no battery storage with this? It's gonna just, whatever's not used goes back to the company?
Yeah, this is just gonna go right to the grid, so the grid is gonna be kind of like it's piggy bank for all the kilowatt hours that the system produces. And when the home needs to use up that energy, it'll pull from that bank, the better. The grid is kind of like your battery for now.
Yeah. It's almost like cloud, I guess.
Yeah.
So there there was, they didn't want to consider doing it on their roofs. I see you got a lot of roof space there.
Well, yeah, well, the key, there's a cathedral, there's there as well, so the you know, basically would kind of look like an industrial park inside of the home. I'm not sure if there's footprints here from that. We went through this through the zoning board of appeals, yes, yeah. There should have been like site, well, not those, that's from where the ground out is gonna go.
Yeah, I don't think we've got, I could.
That's okay.
That's all right, yeah.
You need, really, I could go in, I'd have to go into the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Or to grab them, assuming I could ask them from here, but it was fully, so I had to demonstrate to the zoning board of appeals the need for the variance. And they actually, it was continued to a second night to that, to the following month in order for the the applicant and the solar company to provide all the necessary information to demonstrate why it was a hardship to put them on the roof at the inability to get an equivalent power outage or usage from a roof mounted system versus a ground mounted system. So that document is all provided during the CBA hearing by the need for the variance and having the ground mounted in front of the home.
May I include something too? There was two shade reports provided too. So we did a shading analysis on the rooftop unit and the ground mount, and there were big differences, comparatively speaking, and generally from my experience being in this industry for a while, kind of more of a technical salesperson, I'm not like a cookie cutter person. You'll find that ground mounted or carport solar, generally if it's pitched the right way, you're going to get a lot more production with less of a footprint. So this, I think with the rooftop unit, they would think if the max fit the rooftop, it still wouldn't offset the the consumption needed. And plus the other factors as well. So. There's a lot of shade on it.
Thanks. Yeah, that's really helpful. I'm glad it's located too in a spot. It's not disturbing, really disturbing views of anybody else, right?
You're not going to be able to see it from the road, even in the one to one time. Yep.
Very nice. All right, thanks very much. No further questions.
Okay, thanks, Dave. And Kyla, any questions?
No questions. It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And no, I appreciate the presentation and thanks for the little mini short course in solar and solar power. I'm glad to see people are able to take advantage of it. So, and that's great. Okay. Any other questions come up? Anything concerned? Oh, one more question from Mike.
Question comment. So I'm assuming one of the issues with roof mounted units would be like, we get a lot of, we get snow sometimes. It used to be a lot more.
Yeah.
Did you clean off these? Because there are loads of the ground to get.
Generally, it's gonna just slide right off. And if, generally, if people have like kids at home and they're on a roof, sometimes it could be a hazard. But, you know, with the ground out, this is gonna slide right off and just go into like the pebble. Well, not pebbles, the stones that are gonna be placed under the front portion of the ground out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, super. No, that's, that's, these are, these are good questions. Okay, thank you. So commissioners, do we feel prepared to vote?
Yes.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion and a second?
I can make a motion.
Please.
I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion for the approval of the application of R Pelton Builders LLC 161 Talkeet Notch Road, site plan approval for ground mounted solar array.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
So, excuse me, you're all set?
Thank you.
You're good.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I see. LLC, okay.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next one.
Next one, is this you, Shannon?
It's mostly me. Mark Wilson is did call in. He had his hand raised. I don't know if he's still actively, he's Hey, Mark, how are you? Maybe? Okay. I've got it. Mr. Wilson is available for us if we've got questions or clarification, so. This is an eight dash 24 referral from Town Council to TPZ at the request of Mr. Wilson. And I can bring up aerial maps, I can bring up, I got all sorts of maps to share to help explain what we're doing here if needed. This is the map that had been included in Mr. Wilson's request. There had been a couple page narrative. And this is a lot that is located at Banbury Crescent. It's referred to as loosely in our office as 76 Banbury Crescent. I believe officially it would be 10 Banbury Crescent if we went in sequential order. And Mr. Wilson is requesting a land swap between the town of Farmington and himself for this parcel. Currently, the the parcel is, has a panhandle up to the north end. And this area that's shaded in yellow is currently part of open space for the town of Farmington. And like I said, this panhandle technically is part of of Lot 76. Mr. Wilson's proposal is to swap the two. And what we looked at as part of this request, Mr. Seer and I have been out at the property a number of times. And what we wanted to try to do is figure out where the top of embankment is to the Unionville Brook. The Unionville Brook is located to the west, our plan left here, and which you'll note, and you would have seen if you had an opportunity to look at this prior to the meeting, is this Contour 258 runs along just outside the western edge. And it is close to the top of bank. It's just past the top of bank in some instances. This cyan line is the measured top of bank that Mr. Seer and I found when we did field measurements. And so the proposed property line that Mr. Wilson requesting is, for the most part, follows the top of bank. And then And then towards the southern portion actually pulls in probably five to ten feet away from the top of bank. In addition, there's uh an agreement to place the first five feet in conservation easement. And then a fence line to run along that five foot line. And then from the property line, then we would measure that fifteen foot setback line. Uh, which is the traditional setback uh at this location for side yard on this property. So this yellow area is, I gotta get my areas right here. I'm gonna have to go to my notes so I get this right. So we are adding in uh releasing this yellow area is four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven square feet. And it would be released from our conservation area, our open space area given to Mr. to Wilson for lot seventy-six. In exchange, uh we would receive as open space four thousand seven hundred and fifty-one square feet. So roughly a a net increase in six hundred square feet for us. As part of this process, uh since this would have gone through a conservation, it did go through a conservation review at the time it was approved back in two thousand and five. We had sent it through the same process and last Wednesday night, the Conservation Commission reviewed this application and this, excuse me, this request. And they didn't have any issue with it. They were pleased with the five foot conservation. They were pleased with the fence because that provides then a visual barrier to for someone. And the concern is we don't want material being dumped down the embankment, the all the yard clippings, grass clippings, et cetera. We don't want that all dumped down the embankment and piled up at the foot and in the uh the floodplain of the Unionville Brook. In addition, the Conservation Commission, um their wording, and I listened to the meeting recording so that I had it correct. Their wording been to not permit any home building within this yellow area. And and then obviously then they would, you know, um play yards and sheds and whatnot could go in there. What I would suggest to the commission so that we can track this and move this through on a traditional basis, obviously, the the lot is somewhat uniquely shaped lot. We, what I think would be better and for tracking in perpetuity, particularly if this lot were to be developed multiple years from now, that any ho- any any activity within this, what what had been a hundred foot upland review area. So that property line had been set right on the hundred foot upland review from the wetland fridge of the Unionville Brook is to have anything that, any work that's done within that area would go back to the wetlands commission for review and approval. Period. So not necessarily just prohibit it, but I think it would give the commission then the opportunity to review it as we would any new lot and new building that would be going on there. Because right now, we're simply doing the land swap. The commission didn't have the benefit of looking at a specific footprint, looking at erosion control, looking at limits of clearing like we would on a traditional subdivision plan. We didn't, they don't have that here. And their original review would have been on that old property line, right? So this then gives them that opportunity so that that would be an added condition. Use the five foot conservation easement. Keep the fence that was offered by Mr. Wilson. And then the only additional condition would be that any, any work, any excavation work within this yellow area, which is in the the upland review at the time that this was originally approved, would require inland wetlands commission review and approval. That way, if a corner of a house or something gets skewed again, because it's such an odd shaped lot. It's not, certainly the entire house isn't gonna be in there, but you you run, you're gonna have a deck, you're gonna have something just because of the shape of the lot. And this way, conservation uh inland wetlands has the opportunity to review. And I think covers the intent of what they were trying to do, and it allows them to offer comments with respect to protections they would feel appropriate given the nature of a specific application. So, Mr. Wilson, I don't know if you're on, if you've got anything else to add, or if I hit everything you thought was uh salient to this subject.
No way. I appreciate what you've said. The one thing that I want to point out, though, is that if you look at what you'll call the, uh, I'm gonna call the purple line to the west of the property. That line is where the land starts to slope off towards the wetland. It's considered a, and I I and I I apologize, I don't have the words in front of me. It's a uh um very sensitive area because it could cause erosion and downslope into the uh the wetlands. And if you go up to the north to the property that we're giving up, all of that slopes down towards the wetland. So any work that would have been done in that area uh could have had an impact on the wetland area. So giving that up, we feel that we're being more in uh sensitive to the environment. We're we're giving more land back to the town, and we think it makes it a more appropriate lot fitting with the development that's there. This is one of our last two lots remaining. Uh, we have a lot of people interested in it. It's just a difficult lot the way it's currently construed.
Thank you. So commission members, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I've been on the property and I've I know more about this lot than.
Than your own, right?
Almost than my own, you're right. Yes.
Okay, well, why don't we go through? Um, Matt, any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
Not at all trusting Shannon, wholeheartedly.
Bruce?
So uh, I'm very uncomfortable with this potential uh transaction, and I think there are a couple of reasons for that. First of all, I I think this is a a difficult precedent we might be selling, setting in doing this land swap. Uh, we we expose ourselves to future ones, and I know you you might want to tell me, oh, but we'll treat each one as an individual case, but you know, any eh eh any good lawyer would say, you did it for him, you have to do it for me. So I think it weakens our future abilities to say no to transactions similar to this. Um, the the second thing that makes me uncomfortable with this is I don't think this is a very equitable swap. Um, we're trading some valuable land for some not valuable land. And yeah, there's there's a few more uh square hundred uh feet involved, but it's it it's not good. It's not good land and we and we're giving up good stuff. And I understand it will be quite to the advantage of, you know, WD-two and 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 Mr. Wilson. Uh, but my allegiance and our allegiance has to be to the people of Farmington, and I don't think there's enough in it for them, especially when we look at some of these downstream risks. So I I'm really not up for doing this. My thoughts.
Thank you.
You know, if I can respond to what Bruce has said.
Mr. Wilson, hang on.
Okay, go ahead.
Opportunity, but we, the chair is running the meeting and she's gonna go through the commission members.
Thank you.
And I will, I've got a response, so just hang on.
Okay, so we're gonna go through. Mike?
Okay, my question is for for you, Shannon. When uh when we're doing a landslide, when land swap, do neighbors get notified, like how um if a building subdivision gets, so neighbors might not know that this this is going on? The town plans on doing.
Correct, because the lot is already, it's, there's already a residential lot in existence, so there's no
No notice.
Notification that's needed because there's no impact to the neighbor. Right now, there's a uh unapproved single family lot, and when we finish this, it'd be an approved single family lot.
And please tell me to shut up when I should, but number eight is aware of this land swap we're asking for.
Okay, so neighbors would get a notice when building begins to happen?
Nope.
No?
No, it's a legal.
Already aware.
It's illegal.
I understand.
Mr. Wilson, hang on a second, please.
I'm sorry.
So it's already, it's a legal lot. So just like we've had all the way up Bridgehampton, right? These are all various lots and and they are keep and they're hopscotch around, right? So I like this lot on this side, or I like that lot on the other side or and no different in any other development. They can hopscotch around and and pick the lot they want and put the house and footprint on they want, and then we're reviewing when it comes in for building permit. There's an engineering review, a planning, Bruce and I do this all over again when it comes in for building permit, looking at the specific architectural plan, the specific site plan for each and every lot. And then it and it doesn't even get to the building official until Bruce and I have both signed off.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the same thing will happen for this. So the specific architectural and specific site plan will come in that matches the architectural, right? So the footprint of the house, all the grading, roof leaders, driveway, foundation drains, all the utilities coming in, that all gets looked at by Bruce and I. And gets signed off before it goes to the building official.
Gotcha. Thank you. And um I, I'm a newer member on this council. Is this something that have often with land swaps?
No, it's not. And if I, if I may, um Commissioner Polsky, also to your, to your point, one of the town council members had the same question because I presented to town council. June. I don't know, maybe it was the end of May. I'm losing track of time, but I said, I said, I did the original presentation to town council in order to then issue this to the eight dash twenty-four. Bruce did wetlands last week. I'll be with you folks obviously tonight, and then I'll be back at town council um in July. And one of the commission and uh members, uh council members, excuse me, asked me the same question um with respect to a concern of setting precedent. It is not something that is treated lightly. And honestly, Mr. Wilson's been kicking this around for quite some time, and we've looked at it and and said no. And then we relooked at it to take a look, and the issue is when this so i- it's, I don't think it's as a precedent because we look at these with a fine tooth comb. We had to have the property line staked. We're looking at these in a individual situation. We did do one up on the ridge line a year and a half, year ago, year and a half ago, when there was an oops with a um oil equipment got put in. In a conservation area, like it was in, and there was no other good place to put it. It would have been like a ridiculous amount of piping to put in. So we said, okay, well, she paid a penalty, she paid a fine, and we did a uh a small swap. And in that case, it was a, it was less, this is almost a one to one ratio. This was, it was, I think, a two to one or three to one ratio that we had her do. So, does it happen? Yes. Is it a regular occurrence in the time I've been with Farmington eight years? I think I've done it three times. Okay, so this is not a precedent setting. And then with respect to the quality of the land that is being swapped, what we're, of course, my property lines are gonna disappear when I do this. There we go. All right. So, what I what's quality for one versus quality for what we want from a, I I say we, the town of Farmington, from a protection of the Unionville Brook, and I'm gonna pop this aerial on back on real quick. So the Unionville Brook's down in here. And the Unionville Brook runs north. And then through. And if I put on a different aerial, it might show up a little better. So, you can see this, it's actually over here, this darker area. And it's going to be, I've got pop-up menus coming up. I'm just gonna pull loosely over. It's roughly, so it's a hundred and thirty-four feet from the center of the brook to the property line, which makes sense because the property line was pretty much set at a hundred feet from the upland review uh or from that, from the wetland flagging at the time that this was flagged back in the early two thousands. So I'm gonna put the contours back on. I'm gonna turn the aerial off, so we're looking at just the contours and just the uh property line. And when you start to zoom in, you can see and the tighter the contour, the steeper the slope. So this is uh roughly, I'm gonna say two to three to, or two to one, three to one to slo- slope. If I was walking down it, I'd walk down it at an angle. I wouldn't take this head on, walking up it, I could do it head on, but I wouldn't do it going straight down. So what we have here is a plateau area that is the area that we're looking i- is the uh the subject of the request. And so it's a portion of this plateau area is the subject of the request, and this is the two fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. We've got the fifty-eight contour runs through here. When you look at the panhandle, the actual break in the slope is roughly halfway down this panhandle. So, while wh- what we're trying to do, and the thought was, is to protect this embankment. And we can protect the embankment better by this being town open space than by leaving this in private property. And this plateau area is there is less, perhaps less harm in utilizing this plateau area as part of this is the the assessor's lot number, but this is lot seventy-six for Banbury. And still, again, have the conservation easement and fence line so that there is not an encroachment into the top of that embankment. So that's, that's the thought processes where we were looking at this. So that's why when the request was made, again, we said, alright, you know what? Go stake everything out and let's start to pull tape. And having walked this about halfway back this panhandle, um the slope does start to take off quite a bit. And this area up in here is the plateau area, and Mr. Seer and I had measured exactly where that plateau is. So that's, that's what we, the thought process um with respect to quality of land. I think depending upon the purpose, depends on the nature of the quality uh for what we are differing objectives. So, um, I think that answers both the question on precedent and thought on the the why as to how we chose to to proceed with this. So, um. Okay.
It does.
Okay, thank you for going through that. I really appreciate it. Um, so one last question. For you, Shannon. The lot to the left. My left, yeah. Is that the town's also?
Oh, yeah, this is already town open space, so this is part of the large open space system that came to us uh through the Bridgehampton crossing, so it's one, one section of it, yes.
Okay, yeah, because my next question would be, okay, is that that parcel now that the town's trading for, is that landlocked? But it's gonna be connected to all that, so.
Correct. Yep, it's all contiguous to this.
Lot better now that you walked through that, walked me through that.
Certainly.
Okay, um, Dave? How about you? Questions?
Uh, just uh about in that location, what what ours, what kind of our zone is this?
Uh, it's an R forty cluster.
All right, your explanation was really helpful there.
The lots, I believe, are roughly thirty thousand. Hang on, I gotta get to my right. Hang on, I got an exhibit here somewhere that shows. Uh, this is uh some, uh, this is twenty thousand. The proposed area will be Uh, this is, uh, some, uh, this is twenty thousand. The proposed area will be twenty thousand square feet. So twenty thousand eight hundred seventy-two square feet.
Okay.
Which the existing area was, is twenty-one four. So we're, it's, it's just six hundred square foot difference. And it's in line, we could start going through all the Bridgehampton lots, and they're all gonna be right around the same, somewhere between a half acre and, um, three quarters of an acre.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And Kyla, any questions? Comments?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay. Thank you. Um, uh, personally, I would like to say thank you, Shannon, for the map overlays. It, it's, that was very helpful. Um, so I'm thinking this looks like win-win. Um, and I appreciate the, the, keeping the, getting the panhandle into, uh, the contiguous, uh, unit of the, the Farmington land, owned, Farmington-owned land, making it a bigger parcel and connecting it that way. That makes a lot of sense. Um, so, thank you for the information. Um, uh, any other questions, comments? Okay.
Do we want to ask Mr. Wilson? It's up to you, Adam Chair, if you want to hear anything else from Mr. Wilson on this matter.
Yeah, I, I, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Wilson, if you had something.
I, I lost my complete connection a while ago. Um, yeah, I, 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 I thank you for all your questions. I appreciate any support you can give to this. I just would like to remind, um, the, the commission that we did, out of one hundred percent of the land that we purchased, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we had donated fifty-two percent of the land that we purchased back to the town of Farmington. Uh, so yeah, these were our forty lots, but because of the, and that, and Shannon helped me here, uh, because of the planned development, uh, we were able to do the lots in smaller sizes than forty acre lot, or I'm sorry, uh, forty thousand square foot lots. Um, and so we're, we're, i- if you will, we're just giving more back to the town in order to provide a building space that will provide more to the town as far as revenue, uh, tax revenue. Uh, I, I, I won't tell you, my wife and I are looking at that lot, but, uh, we're looking at one of the two lots that are left.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Thanks for your contributions to the discussion. Um, now, our job is to make a recommendation to the town council, correct, Shannon? Okay. So this, we would make an affirmative, a motion in the affirmative, correct? If we, if that's the direction we choose to go in. Okay. And if we did choose to go in that direction and we would, and we want to add the staff comments, we would just note those three comments, correct?
Correct.
Is, I'm, that's my, okay.
Correct. Yes. Unless somebody had something else they wanted to change, but yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So commissioners, do we understand what we're voting on, what we're, yes, our next step is? Okay. Uh, can I have a motion and a second?
I would like to make a motion to approve the referral.
Uh, issue a positive referral to town council.
Issue a positive referral to town council for CGS eight dash twenty-four referral, request for release of four thousand one hundred fifty-seven square foot piece of town open space property to WD two LLC in exchange for four thousand seven hundred fifty-one square foot piece of property from WD two LLC to be made permanent town open space on Banbury Crescent with the two noted, or three noted, uh, comments.
Second.
Okay. Um, commissioners, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 And all opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Positive referral to the town council.
Thank you all very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, the next new business item, Philip, I'm Musell. Okay. Thirty-four Meadow Road. So this is, uh, we are accepting an application. So all we need is a motion and a second to accept the application.
Like to make a motion to accept the application by Philip Musell, three forty Meadow Road, for special permit for new home and access of four thousand square feet, the finished living area and five thousand square feet total area in our forty zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. And the motion passes. Thank you. Now we are going to refer to our sixth item that was added to the agenda. And, um, I will read this again, so everyone knows what we're talking about. So this is, uh, new business item number six, and, uh, by Jack Kemper, twenty-two Tunksis Street, to accept an application for special permit for home expansion in excess of the R twenty thresholds, and attached accessory dwelling unit in excess of seven hundred square feet in the R twenty zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. So this is, uh, we need a motion to accept the application.
Can I have that?
Well, no, you can just say, as, she doesn't, you don't have to read it, just say, so moved.
So moved.
Yep, so moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We do that all the time. We don't have to read it in a third time.
Okay, just checking. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And no opposition. Okay. And the motion passes. Now, uh, as I stated at the beginning of this meeting, we have two official public hearings, but we are not discussing anything on them. We are going to open the hearings and then close them again.
Uh, continue.
I mean, continue them again. Excuse me. See, I get my terminology mixed up all the time.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Keeping our ducks and rose there. We appreciate it, ladies. Okay, so, um, the first public hearing is on, um, for, I forget, I read this one, yes. Farmington West Estates Limited Partners, uh, application for a ten lot subdivision of Governor's Pride off of Snowberry Lane, Snowberry Lane, phases, uh, six A and AH Zone, and the hearing was continued from June tenth, twenty twenty-four. So we'd like to open this and reopen this, and, um, I need a motion to continue the uh, public hearing until July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
Can we say so moved?
Uh-huh.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So that's continued to July eighth.
It's your new favorite thing now, right then? Just wait. Conversely, conversely, Liz can pass it off and say, I need a motion for public hearing.
I could.
And need somebody else read it. So.
I like this though.
Okay. We're on a roll.
All right.
Okay.
Scott's gonna really thank you when he gets back.
Yeah, we can just revert back to Scott.
Okay.
Scott's version. So, um, okay, I would like to open the, uh, public hearing for CPD Properties and three four two Colt Highway LLC, for application for a special permit and site plan approval for a new fuel service station, convenience store, and quick service restaurant at three forty-two Colt Highway, B one BR Zones. So the hearing is opened, and we need a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? So moved. Continued until July eighth. Thank you. Now, Shannon, you're up.
I am up, and I'm gonna slide it to planners report items on you folks. So, um, this one hopefully is fairly easy. Daily Grind, located at seventeen Depot Place. Um, those of you that are coffee lovers may have, um, had an opportunity to visit Daily Grind already. Um, they are looking to expand into the barber shop that has vacated. So the tenant space immediately next to them has vacated. So we're familiar, right? Come down one seventy-seven, and it's the right-hand turn. And Daily Grind's located here at the end, uh, is showing it on the GIS map. And we've got the Board of Ed and Community Services building here for our rec department. So the applicant has requested to expand in to the, like I said, to the barber shop. Um, they are, there are no exterior changes to the building. It'll be interior. The concern staff had had was with seating. The current coffee shop, I believe, has six to eight seats in it. The prior smoothie shop had been approved for twelve seats, and the, uh, barber shop had been approved for, for two, um, two cutting stations and say, um, I think four, four or five waiting chairs, and three parking spaces have been allotted to them. So we take a look at everything, uh, again, no exterior changes. This is gonna be an interior renovation. It expands the seating from, I would say, six to eight seats to fourteen. Would be seven parking spaces if they were full, and, uh, the shoe repair shop remains, and then as you come around the side of the building, there's other tenants there, but the parking at the moment does not seem to be a problem. I was going to follow up with the land owner just to have a conversation with him, but, and as you can see, there's some fairly odd property lines here because Depot Place, actually, this portion of Depot Place is all within the condot rails right of way, um, which is interesting. And then, uh, for, or one depot actually is also part of the state of Connecticut. So there's all sorts of interesting cross-access, cross-parking agreements that are here. There's some shared parking, right? Board of Ed, uh, parking during the day, and then rails to trails parking in the evening and on weekends. So, um, that's the request. If, uh, I was gonna handle it administratively, there's a building permit in with me for this, uh, expansion to push into the barber shop location. Unless there's a, a question or concern, or the commission feels there's a need for a specific site plan for this, I was gonna proceed with this administratively.
Makes sense to me. And anybody have any questions or concerns?
It's already handicap accessible?
Yes, ish, as handicap accessible as that building is gonna be. There is a handicap space there at the front, uh, at the front door. So there is a space there. I honestly, I don't drink coffee. I haven't been in the building. So I don't know what the threshold is like. I don't know. Um, I don't know any of, of that. So I haven't been in, but, um, there is a space there.
Okay.
It's great they're expanding already.
Yeah.
It's not long ago they opened, so.
I went in once earlier in March, I think, and
Okay.
it was hopping on a Saturday morning. So, you know.
That's a good thing.
That, that is a wonderful thing.
I'll have to check it out. I haven't drunk coffee. I drink my coffee black, so I like some coffee.
That's good. I don't drink coffee either, but the rest of my family does. So we, 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 we went and visited.
Dave and Kyla, anything? You're good with both, both of this?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah.
I am, I do like coffee also.
Can't live without.
All right. So, um, okay. The next one, hopefully, I think equally as straightforward is our friends at Uphouse have a monument sign in for review. So it's, uh, I think close to the existing location. One of these I had. Here we go. So this is the, it's the former Marriott on Farm Springs Road. So here's the driveway. You can see the former Marriott sign at the edge of the landscaping. There's a transformer. There's a fire hydrant out here at the front end. Um, and then when I come into my Marriott plan, or my Uphouse plan, um, there's a spaghetti of utilities over here that we've been negotiating with them back and forth. So I think the existing sign technically falls within the sanitary sewer easement. This proposed monument sign is just gonna be pushed back, so it's out of the sanitary sewer easement. Um, and that's, there's no other, it's zoning compliant. It's basically a one-for-one and replacement, except we weren't letting them put it back in the exact same location because I don't wanna sign and foundation over top of the sanitary sewer easement. More importantly, our director of public works doesn't, and I really don't wanna have to explain to him why this town planner approved a sign for his sanitary sewer. So, um, so that's what they're looking to do, and when you take a look at their sign application, um, the height, so our monument sign height is six foot, this is four eleven. The area max is twenty-five square feet, and they're within the twenty-five square feet. Uh, they actually have taken the entire sign. Normally, we honestly just use the actual, uh, lettering. Um, so, and the lighting is, they're, they're saying edge lit letters, so not front lit and not internally illuminated. It's, it's going to provide a halo lit, uh, appearance, which is permitted in the regulation. So again, unless there's, um, additional concern or something, obviously, we'll, I think what we'll have them do is actually stake out the location and the, and they'll have to, they'll have to do a call before you dig, and so all of the utilities will all be marked out. And if we need to push and pull this a little bit, then we will. So, and I'd love to get rid of the temporary sign that they've installed there. That's a nice vinyl banner. So.
Moving along.
Um, so again, if there's no objection, I will handle this administratively.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
All set.
Any questions?
Dave or Kyla, any questions about that?
No, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. Perfect.
Or I'm good too.
Thank you. Okay. That's all. I just had those two, uh, this evening.
Okay. Super. Then the last thing on the agenda is, uh, approval of the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty-four Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion and a second?
Can't find it. There it is. We can make a motion to approve the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty-four Town Plan and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was gonna abstain because I wasn't here. So, okay. Thank you very much. And let's adjourn at, ooh, eight-thirty on the dot?
Oh.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, everyone.